Absent is Mr. Lakin.
I would ask the members that had opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting, any changes or corrections, otherwise I'm looking for approval. So we've got a proper motion?
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Do we have any citizens input tonight?
Oh, can you hand me those sheets?
Okay. Do we have any citizens input tonight from anybody regarding the board of zoning appeals? Being done, we'll proceed to the first item. A setback variance for garage has been constructed to the front of a house located at 1773 Stonebridge Drive, Danridge by Michael and Susan Sorrels. Are all the Sorrels here?
Ronnie's not here either, don't guess. I don't see him nowhere. This is over in Stonebridge, this house has been built for years and they had a concrete pad in front of the house for several years and so they actually, they started building it and stuff before they had a building built. And so before they found out that they had to get a permit for it, they needed variance from this board to build in front of the house. And I don't know what year the pad was poured, but it's, if you're familiar with that subdivision, that is a lot of, we've done a lot of variances over, over the years. Some of the lots you can't build anywhere else. That's one, one of the reasons we changed the rules was that subdivision.
Did we have?
This one is already poured years ago.
Do we have, do we have a map on that?
Where'd you get that? No, I haven't seen anything of it. Yeah, that's all we've got, the picture of what's already built.
Did y'all, did you go look for it?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
But if the house is, it's way in front of the house, of course, it's down like this, so. Here's the garage and the house is up here, closer to the road.
You know if they, you know if they got a building permit?
They did.
We were sent a letter through building department for not having a permit and it was obvious.
They built it without a permit and then once Rob caught them, there you go.
Okay.
And they, I guess they thought with the pad already being poured there, I don't know, who knows? Anyway, he caught them. And now they, we need to give them variance for building front of the house. Johnny Higgins did. I don't know how they got cross waved on not getting built yet.
My understanding is the only place he could really put one?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's the only place I've been there before, I just didn't go there today.
You're familiar with it?
Yes.
But you guys don't hear, you need setback variance?
No, it's just building front. It's being constructed. Yeah, I don't know why, it doesn't need to be a setback, it's just building in front of the house.
Okay, so it's just the location, so it's basically?
It's not anything to do with that.
You know how big that lot was?
I'm sure it's.
It wasn't exempt for the acreage, was it?
No, no.
Okay.
Cause some of those are pretty good sized lots in there.
Yeah, 1.27, okay. Alright, everybody understand what happened? What the issue is? So it's one of those basically where we're giving forgiveness because they didn't ask for permission. Though we might have given permission due to the fact that the topography's about on the lot, so.
I would suspect there'll be many more in the future out there when more people build there like that.
Well, we can't do anything about him not asking for building permits.
No, no, I'm just saying that.
We have issue variances.
Oh, we have.
In such a situation, have we not?
We have, yes. And if it wasn't a topography issue, then we could, you know, basically we could said, make them tear it down or move it or whatever. But in this case here, if that was the only place it could go, that's the only place it could go. So. Any other questions, all? Open floor for?
I make a motion.
Okay, a motion to, to issue variance. I got a proper motion?
A second.
And a second. Now, any more discussion, everybody understand? Alright, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The next is a rear setback variance of 11 feet for proposed addition to a commercial building located at 333 Landfield Road, Jefferson City by Ronnie Trent. Mr. Trent, if you could come up, please.
We actually, that number 11, we just need to go to six.
Yeah, he, so.
It was kind of a last catch on it if we could, if that's only, if that's possible or not. Six feet from that property line, I don't think back there's the old landfill. We've gone to the dumps.
Here's the, this for the site plan too that he's on playing.
Right.
Right now, we've got 23 feet at the closest to the property line and I have to go within about, within six feet.
How many feet did you figure out and you need to?
I need, we'll leave, we'll leave six and we've got 23, so that's what, 16 feet?
So you need a variance of 17 feet?
Yeah, 17 feet, yeah.
And like Ronnie said, nothing's behind him but the old landfill. And this is for a indoor shooting range for the sheriff's department, a lot of it, right?
Well, we're talking about it, yeah. Yeah.
Which they already got one out there, out there.
Yes.
So it's six feet instead of 11?
Yes, ma'am. If we could.
So this would be for the public also?
No.
No?
No, it's private.
Jordan, you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I don't see any potential for nuisance here. The way that the building is laid out, they've got bays in the front there, so this wouldn't be able to go there. They have to basically construct a new building or do this here, so. I don't see a potential for nuisance, that's the main thing that I would look at. And I don't think there, I don't see a problem with this, so I'd recommend approval of.
Any questions? Any issues you see? Alright.
One more motion.
Yep. Proper motion and second. Any other discussion? Being done, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Just keep those, he's supposed to have them.
No other item, there's no other items on the agenda, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A proper motion?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, aye. Aye.
Did I miss that? Turn that off?
Alright. I guess we're ready to go into planning commission. I hereby call order the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission to order. Looks like we have a form present, all but our new question.
Let's see, you know, okay.
Mr. Brooks, not here then.
Sick of us already?
Okay.
Sick of it.
Alright. Having a form, we will proceed. I would ask the members that had opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting. Any changes or corrections, please note, otherwise I'm looking for approval. Got a proper motion?
Second.
And second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We now, it's time for citizens input. I have here, people who signed up to speak. Some of you may want to speak when this one item comes up. If not, you can come ahead now, but I have some here who did not list any, anything. Suzie Jarnigan?
I'm Suzie Jarnigan and I live at 1262 Lakeview Drive in Dandridge. I've been on a personal quest lately for our counties, just to see what the personality is. Because I think it's interesting to see all the changes over the years. I'm 62 and some of you guys are the same age, some of you are a little older or some younger. But it's interesting to see the change over the years and we know that it's shifting, that we're not going to have 100% homegrown people here and running for office and, you know, doing the business. But I just wanted to thank you all for all the work you do. Y'all, I've been going to churches, I've been to like a dozen churches and restaurants and meetings and joining foundations and Facebook groups. And I've seen the ones who have taken initiative to run for office or take on organizations' demands without blinking an eye. I see all of you here tonight doing your civic duty. And you have had to fill in the gaps for years and I appreciate you all. You've taken on the gripes over zoning and then you all took the initiative. And now with this long-range planning, you are doing a wonderful job setting a precedent. You're doing the official survey where everyone can give their opinion, that's genius. I'm here to commend you all, to thank you for your foresight, for your focus on what is positively the very best scenarios for our county going forward. God bless Jefferson County. And I want you to think about going forward, the healthy living, environmental awareness, the open meetings, the trusting each other, trusting people, hoping we can all stay determined to see the end and accept the choices with no regrets. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Chester?
I'm here about the potential CARM.
Okay, then you may want to speak when that item comes up?
Yeah.
Okay. You just didn't list here, so I wasn't sure, so. David Seals?
Yes, I'm here about the CARMs.
Oh, you're here for CARM too? Okay.
Yes, I apologize.
I'll let you speak during that time if you.
I apologize, I'm not writing that one.
Looks like everybody else is basically here to speak over the CARM concept plan, okay. Being that was all that's signed up, we will proceed to new business. First item is a site plan review for an addition to a commercial building located at 333 Landfield Road, Jefferson City by Mr. Ronnie Trent, which you should have plans here in front of you.
It's the same plan as I gave you for the variance there. It's just the building that Ronnie's doing up there at the garage, we just have a variance for.
Okay. Just. So. The use.
It's commercial.
Okay, I know it's commercial, but the use he's wanting to do.
It's a land.
Is an indoor, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have specific guidelines in place for an indoor shooting range? And if so, does it, does this site plan meet all those requirements?
I didn't look at it because, you know, I originally sent him to Jeff City.
Right.
And so Jordan sent him back here. I believe in Jordan anyway.
Okay.
And then since then, we.
Let's just.
Sure, we think he needs to go back to Jeff City, but I don't want Ronnie to go back to that, that's the counter anything.
Yeah, we do.
We've held him off.
We should have. I just want to make sure that.
Well, would that be?
I think there's, there are guidelines in places for shooting ranges that we, that we adopted. Yeah.
I might not have the most recent.
Yeah, you would.
You would, yeah. I'm sorry, I should have brought my book, I was.
And Ronnie can probably answer those questions.
Okay.
Setbacks and things like that. Indoor, ain't it?
Indoor, indoor, yes, indoor.
36.
There we go. Outdoor.
That is the one for indoor.
Yeah, indoor.
Yeah, alright. Site planers required, alright. Projectile containment, indoor shooting range shall be designed and constructed so no projectiles can leave the building.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's part of the construction of the building.
Yeah.
A sound abatement, indoor shooting ranges shall be designed and constructed sound obscene 60 vehicles at the property line. I don't think you're going to disturb the landfill from that standpoint. And then I don't think there are any other neighbors there. Okay, I don't think that's going to be an issue. And one parking space is required for each firing station. The parking area and driveway have to be maybe a gravel surface, which you've, you've got a concrete surface plus you have gravel surface.
Lot of parking, yeah.
Okay, so I think you've met the three major requirements for the development standards there, okay? Just want to make sure on that, okay? Any other questions? In regards to this?
Later on, how, other houses be built in here?
Not for murder.
They can't be built, not on the landfill property.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what backs up to. Well, even if they were, okay, even if they were, this would already be in place, okay?
I don't think it'd be a nuisance, even though a home's not there.
I just like that sound.
Yeah. Maybe the directly, the homes directly are flooding, it could be if that. Which is very unlikely that would ever be developed, to be honest, but it's not totally impossible, I suppose.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright. Doors open. Got a motion to approve them?
Second.
And second.
Sorry.
Mr. Morgan, okay. Now, any other discussion? Being done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Need to keep those to mark them approved. Are you ready? Okay. Next item is a concept plan for KRM at River Glen. 1834 London Road New Market by Knox Area Rescue Ministries.
Not a concept, preliminary.
Well, okay, it says concept on the agenda, so, but.
We don't do content.
Okay, alright, well, let's, I'm just reading what was on the agenda. Alright, so is there someone here to speak on behalf of that?
Good evening, my name's Ben Mullins, I'm an attorney at France McCallum Seymour in Knoxville, represent Knox Area Rescue Ministries. I have with me members from a Studio Four architect firm that put together this preliminary PUD. And we also have members of CARM here as well. Now, this has been before you a couple of times informally before we got here tonight and I appreciate your patience. Back last month on April 25, I had sent a letter in to the zoning department. I think I see my letterhead in front of you on some, I believe you all have received this letter and I hope you've had a chance to review it. And you also, I believe, received a letter from Mr. Taylor Forrester at Long Ragsdale Waters today as well. Who is CARM? CARM stands for Knox Area Rescue Ministries. And CARM is a Christian nonprofit organization that provides services for poor and underprivileged and those needing help in the Knox area. This Knox area is not just Knoxville, Knox County includes the surrounding counties, Blunt, Anderson, Loudon, and Jefferson County as part of their service area. They have been in service since 1960, providing, you know, their funding is completely based upon individual donors giving to their mission or they also have their secondhand stores where people donate and they use that to go back into their ministry. And they provide a whole range of services. One of the services they provide in Knox County is what's called Serenity House, which is a similar concept to what we are trying to do on this property. Serenity House provides temporary 12 to 18 month residences for people who used to be homeless, used to have some issues that caused their homelessness, have wanted to overcome those issues, wanted to get back into housing. And so they enter into a lease agreement with CARM to stay at that location and to actually earn their residence. And through that process, take classes, get educated on how they can then transfer from this facility onto have, living completely on their own. And this, as Mr. Seals said, is a preliminary PUD concept plan. That's found in your zoning ordinance under Article 7.4 I-3A. And that's a preliminary PUD plan not requiring the subdivision of the property. And the PUD allows there to be kind of a conglomerate of different uses on the same property if you meet the requirements of the PUD standards. And that's why we're moving forward, we're not attempting to subdivide this property. The entire property is 186.86 acres. We're focusing on, and if you have the concept that we did submit previously, there are three parcels. The lower parcel to the south is about 24.66 acres, about 25 acres. And what we are seeking to do on that parcel is put this, these five duplex units, each providing eight beds for a total of 40 beds. And we're also going to have a facility, a kitchen and dining facility on the site and a welcome center. We intend to, instead of just being an education dining facility, to actually put a church on that property at that location instead. That was something that I approached Mr. Seals about revising the concept plan, but we missed the deadline on that. That's something that we can come back and do later as we need to. But again, CARM is a, is a Christian organization. They, this, this is their ministry is to help the underserved, the homeless. And, but I want to make it clear, this is not a homeless shelter. This is not, if you drive into Knoxville, you drive down Broadway and you go under the bridge and you see all the homeless people there, and there's plenty of homeless shelters there. Homeless shelters, that's temporary, you know, come in, they need, they need a meal, they need a place to stay for, very temporary. You know, they're not vetted, they're just allowed to come in. This is not this. These men are here voluntarily. They're not incarcerated, they're not committed, they're not told they have to be in this facility. For whatever reason, while they were formerly homeless, they now want to overcome those circumstances. And this is a place where they can do that. This is residential living, we are building homes to lease to them. They will sign a lease, just like if you go and rent an apartment or rent a home, you sign a lease. The lease is for, is for a 12 to 18 month period. The first 12 months, they earn their residence by farming the property. There's 186 acres there, it's agricultural property, they will be farming the property, they will be creating commercial products for agricultural products, just like any other farm. They will be gardening and making, growing their own food that they will consume. And is that bartering with CARM that allows them to have this residence? They will also be getting educated on the property, on life skills, on how they can overcome whatever circumstances they had in their life as to why, what led them to homelessness. Many of it is substance abuse. They've already, these men have already been, they will have to take a drug test, they will have to be drugs free to be eligible to come to this property. This is not a drug treatment facility. We are not treating them for substance abuse here. We are not treating them for alcoholism or, or any drug addiction. They've already been treated somewhere else and now this is an opportunity where they can then have a home and learn how to transition into a different place. And I think it's one of the biggest misconceptions, people think this is going to be a bunch of homeless people just hanging out, wanting to come here, or a bunch of people that are, you know, addicted to drugs and alcohol. And, you know, there was statements about, you know, how you want to keep, you know, people from fording the river and bringing illegal substances on. This is, these are people that are wanting to change their circumstances. That's why they are here, that's the services we are offering to them. It's very, it's going to be very selective, very vetted. There's no sex offenders, there'll be criminal background checks, we're not dealing with anybody that has a violent criminal history. These are people for whatever circumstances, your brothers, your uncles, your fathers, your sons, who have had circumstances where now they need help and we can offer that at this location. Prior to even putting down a contract to buy this property, Mr. Chady and I reached out to the zoning department, reached out to Mr. Seals and Mr. David Williams at that time, and said, here's what we're doing. And Mr. Seals here, we were completely upfront with what we've talked about. I'm not saying anything here today what we're doing that I didn't talk to Mr. Seals about at that time. We didn't have our concept plan fully fleshed out, but we did have the Beria Program overview, which is part of the information I gave you there. And we asked, because I've been doing this long enough to know, this type of use, people are going to get concerned about it, people are going to have misconceptions about it, they're going to imagine the worst. And most of the people behind me, they have very sincere beliefs as to what this is going to be, but they're only thinking about the worst case scenario. So I reached out to Mr. Seals, understanding there's going to be people who are opposed to it. We're going to have people that are going to stand here and say they don't want it in their backyard and I get that. So I asked, is this allowed in the zone or do we need to seek a rezoning or do we need to do something else? And he sat down, he talked to Mr. Williams about it. And I came in to meet with him, he said, Ben, you're zoned agriculture, you don't have to get a rezoning. Every use that you've listed is allowed in the agricultural zone. And I said, can you put that in writing for me because I know that's going to come up? And he did. And that letter is part of the packet that you have here. Now, and that's important because Mr. Forrester just sent a letter in saying, well, this is recovery housing. Now, that's a term he picked, that's not a term that we have used. Again, this, we are providing residences and education and Christian counseling and services to these individuals like a church would, like a school would. Like any residents, you, the housing would, they're farming the land. All of those things, agriculture, is allowed 9.3A1. We're going to be farming the property, we're going to be selling some of the, the things that we produce on the property. We're going to have some of the equestrian events, just like the current owner is doing, a lot lower scale. But we will, and will be producing food that they will then, kind of a farm table, be able to eat the food that they have raised on the site. That is an agricultural use and there's no question that's allowed in the agricultural zone. Residential, this is primarily a residence. Now, there's some state law and some federal law that I'll talk about in a second that kind of intersect with the residential uses for certain, certain population groups. But this is a residential place, we are leasing this to them. If they break the lease, they have to leave. Just like if you don't pay rent, you have to leave. If they're not willing to, you know, provide services to work. If they're not willing to, you know, provide services to work, they can't stay here. They will be evicted. If they are not willing to transition to going off the property and earning a job, which is part of the, part of the process is, you work the property first, and then we'll help find you a job. And once you find a job, you'll start paying a percentage of your income towards rent. So you get used to paying rent, just like anybody else. So when they've complete the program, they'll have this money management skills to be able to go somewhere else and buy a home or rent a home, or not be homeless again. This is, again, I can't underscore this enough, KARM is completely a nonprofit religious organization. They're not doing this to make money. They're not making money. This is a very expensive piece of property. Many of the neighbors, after we had a meeting at the church there, said, why on earth would you spend $3 million on a piece of property to help 40 people? And the reason we're doing this is because Jesus would do that. Jesus, if they want to laugh, they can. Jesus told the prodigal son parable, he killed the fattened calf for the son that went off, that wasted everything that he owned, all his inheritance, he came home, let's kill the fattened calf, let's throw a party, because every person is valuable. And they don't want to allow us to be characterized as a Christian organization, but this is our mission, this is our ministry. And to KARM, this type of investment, to help even 40 men, is worth everything that we're going through, all the money, all the expense, all these meetings, all the neighbors that are unhappy with this concept. It's worth it to them because it is the heart of their Christian ministry. Which goes into 9.3A6, churches permitted use in agricultural zone. Public uses are also a permitted use in agricultural zone, including schools, and there will be an education component to this, as is indoor recreation and outdoor recreation, which is part of this program as well. So each of the individual uses that make up the concept of this BREA program that we're trying to do at this property is a specific permitted use in the agricultural zone. That's what Mr. Williams determined when he looked at it, and that's why they signed the letter. So we are here today saying, we're allowed to do this. This isn't about whether KARM can do this, whether they should do this. This is about, do we meet the standards of a preliminary planned unit development under 7.3I-3A? And no one's told us we haven't. Those standards, a preliminary PUD is, is pretty wide open. It's right, it's really, it's my fault for saying concept. Mr. Seals teased us. Where Mr. Forrester and I, usually in front of zoning boards, they would call something like this concept plan. It's, y'all don't use that term here. And so we kind of mixed our verbiage there, and I apologize for that. But when you look at, PUD is not requiring the subdivision of property, preliminary PUD plan, it says a concept plan, so it does have a concept there in the, in the verbiage. Prepared by an architect or engineer, which Studio Four has prepared this, there are architects that prepared this concept. Containing the following information shall be submitted to the planning commission for review. The general location of buildings and uses, we've done that. General circulation patterns, general circulation patterns, we've done that. Open space and recreation areas, we've provided that information on our, on our concept. Parking areas, ingress egress points, sketch elevations, drainage boundary dimensions, overall density of the development, public uses, land state concepts, zoning classification, and other information deemed pertinent. We've provided all that. Then it says, the approved preliminary PUD plan shall serve as the plan upon which the PUD plan is based. Approval for a preliminary PUD plan shall lapse 12 months from the date it was approved. So what this does is, it allows us some comfort. If approved, you could do this. This is the general layout, all this makes sense, there's enough room, there's enough parking, you know, there's shielding, we're maintaining the existing vegetation, almost, you know, undisturbed, the existing vegetation, and trying to put this in an area where it's, you know, kind of tucked away as much as we can, so it's not intrusive to anybody else around us. That's why we kind of put it in the corner and left the existing vegetation, those existing wooded areas alone. Once we know, if we get this preliminary approval, we have 12 months to come up with a final PUD plan. And that's where the rubber meets the road. That's where you have to prepare a PUD plan, which includes detailed architectural and engineering plans. That includes utilities, vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems, location of all structures, topographical intervals at no less than five feet, minimum elevations, grading, physical relationship, all the things that if you were, you know, developing it, all the, all the expensive engineering, drainage, utility work, those things, we have to provide within 12 months, but we know it's worth the investment and moving forward and having that work done, knowing that preliminarily, what we are proposing meets the intent of the PUD. That's, that's why we're here. Again, it's, it's not about the use as much as they want to make it, about the use. It's about, you know, this very preliminary PUD process, and, and do we, do we meet that definition? But again, we felt comfortable in signing a contract to purchase the property based upon our conversations with Mr. Seals and Mr. Williams, that this was, this was allowed in the agricultural zone. Now, our opposition, I understand, you know, they don't want it here. They don't want it in their backyard, and they don't tell us where they want it, just not, just somewhere else, just not here. And as an emotional reaction, as a homeowner, I understand that. It doesn't change the rules that are in place and what's allowed and what isn't allowed. As an administrative body, which is planning commission is, some of the case law calls it a quasi-judicial body, but you're an administrative body, you have a great deal of discretion in what you do, but that discretion has to be based upon the existing rules and regulations, which is why we're following what the, what your Article 7.4I-3A says. What do we have to come forward with a preliminary PUD plan? And so we're following those rules and regulations. Where do we fail to meet the PUD standards? We don't. We meet them. We've specifically tailored our plan to those standards. The letter Mr. Forrester wrote, he doesn't talk about the PUD standards or how we don't meet that. He talks about the agricultural zone and wants to characterize this as recovery housing, which is a term that doesn't have a definition. So it means whatever is convenient for them to say it means, when specifically each of our individual uses are permitted in the agricultural zone. Now, there's also, and I put this in the letter, in the record, not because we don't meet the PUD provisions, but because I know if Mr. Forrester, if you were to approve this and Mr. Forrester were to bring a lawsuit, I've got to make sure I preserve for the record other arguments, because courts look at, what did you argue, did you give people a chance? And that's the reason I wrote this big, long letter. And there's exemptions in state law for religious organizations. That, there's exemptions that say that if, even a rule of general applicability, like a zoning ordinance or PUD concepts, if it substantially interferes, and which basically, under the Tennessee statute, the Tennessee Religious Freedom Restoration Act, which is Tennessee Code Annotated 4-1-407, if it is a substantial burden to a sincerely held religious belief or ministry, then the zoning ordinance can't prohibit it. And that was tested in Nashville with homeless shelters. A church built tiny homes, and the neighborhood opposed it, and the Court of Appeals ultimately held that, under this statute, that the zoning ordinance couldn't have prohibited it. Now, in that case, the BZI did the right thing, they approved it. But the Court of Appeals did apply that statute and say, you know, it's unquestioned that a church, part of the key part of a church's ministry is, is trying to help the poor. And that's what we're trying to do here, help the people who have, for whatever reason, found themselves where they're homeless and now want to move back into where they can be self-sustaining again. There's also exemptions under Tennessee Code Annotated 1324101 for individuals living under the same household. The state statute says that meets the definition of a single-family residential and has to be considered a residential use if they are considered disabled. And like we said, many of the people that we are going to be providing services for, you know, unfortunately did have some issues in the past where they had substance abuse issues, and that meets the definition of disability under the state statute. But we don't have to get to the Tennessee Religious Freedom Restoration Act or that. If we just apply your zoning ordinance, apply the preliminary plan, PUD ordinance as written, approve this, we'll have to come back. We'll have to have another meeting before this body on getting the final plan approved. The neighbors have a chance to look at what we have planned and talk about traffic, and talk about utilities, and talk about those things, but that conversation is premature at this preliminary PUD phase, because it's only until we get the green light to move forward with this very high-level concept, do we have to provide the architecture and engineering to those, those questions. And that's why we're here today. So I would ask that you approve our preliminary PUD plan. Thank you all very much. Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry. Questions for Mr. Williams?
Bones.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bones. I'll answer just about anything. I have.
Mr. Bones, I apologize.
Questions?
Well, one of the things that I'd like to know is, why don't what he's telling match what's on his plan, Mr. Chairman? And I don't know what it is that specifically, but it don't match.
Okay. If you want me to, if you want to ask what you're looking at, I can tell you.
I'm asking you draw eight buildings and four apartments, and you said you're building five duplexes.
That's for the, if you, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I apologize.
If this is your plan, my problem is that the stuff you're saying doesn't match what you're doing on this.
If you look at, and you see, and I think you see that there, there's the courtyard, those are the homes for the residents. We have some, those smaller buildings, those are temporary stay units for people if they want to visit, they want to come in, they have family members that want to come in and stay. So they're not staying in the same building with them because they're going to be sharing with roommates. That gives them a place to stay. That's additional residential units that's not available for, you know, to deal with the homeless population, but that's for a temporary stay for people that want to visit. And that's what's on the plan there. That's what you're seeing, those additional, those additional homes.
When I first looked at your plan, one of the things that jumped out at me is, is that if you look in the A1 zone, it lists that there, basically that you can have single-family housing, and you can have duplexes, and I think it's manufactured homes that are allowed there. But what, I guess the thing is, is this, is if you look at the definition of what we have in here in regards to what a dwelling is, it says it's basically a place to sleep and also has a place to eat. Okay. But your dining facility is separate, so these units basically don't meet all the criteria for a dwelling unit based on what you're showing here on the plan. If it were designed as a true apartment style and had that area in there with it, I think it would fit more, but into, I'm just going to be based on the definitions that I saw that we have in here as far as what a dwelling unit is supposed to have. And then going back and looking at the A1 was allowed. So that was, that was one of my questions, was the, basically was the style of housing that you're proposing here, because there is another picture over here, or basically another drawing that does show a building that does have a kitchenette area and a living area, which would meet the criteria per the definition.
So if all of our units were redesigned to that, that would, in your mind, more closely speak to the definition of single-family resident? Because part of, part of the reason we have the conversation is, if you don't, if we don't meet it, how do we not meet it so we can come back and fix it?
Right. And I, and I saw that. And so, and here's the thing, I understand your concept, but what I don't want to do is to approve something that would set a precedent that says that dormitory-style living, it would be acceptable, per se, when I don't think it meets the definition of what we have for, for single, for single-family house or for a dwelling unit. That was one of, that was the thing that jumped out at me for that, for that reason there. The other was, is that typically, a lot of times when we, when we're looking at this, and I assume that it very well be on, if the final comes, it very well be on there. But we have new guidelines now that show that on your property, that wherever you're going to have a building site, that there has to be a certain area reserved out there for our guidelines. Because, I mean, I can read the topo map here and look, but without knowing that. So that would be one thing that would definitely have to be shown on that, that final plat, which is, is new. It's new for Jefferson County. So that too jumped out at me. The other, and I just, it's not here, but for instance, once, once you get, once it comes with a final, and you have your street and road plan that's laid out there, you know, I guess my thing is, is, is that at that point in time, that design would have to meet all of our road specifications. Even though these may be a private road, per se, they would still have to meet our street grades and width and things of that nature. So that, but a lot of times we see that in here. And the other is, we would like to know is, is that, is there, based on your plans, are the utilities that are there, are they sufficient for your, for your needs?
Sure.
Or what you're proposing? And a lot of times we, we look at that to see on our preliminary plats, if those things are there. And I know you've not addressed them, but you have addressed other things, but those are some of the things that I had written down that were, that may have been issues for me.
I appreciate that. And I think you're right. If you come forward with just a preliminary plat, and you're going to subdivide the property, and the subdivision regulations require that stuff to be on the front end. Looking at the PUD, it's having a big overview as to what you're going to do, then you kind of dig into the details about the road profiles, about the utilities, and those are the things that we have 12 months to come forward with something that shows that we can, can meet that. It's just a first step in a process that gives us some comfort level that we can move forward with this idea and spend the money in doing the engineering and for the road profiles and working through utility issues, and if utilities need to be upgraded, and what we have to do with that.
Okay. The other thing is, is you have this in three phases. Were you looking for approval for tonight for all three phases?
No, sir.
Or you were just looking for the first phase?
The first, the second phase is essentially what's already going out there. We're not, you know, we're up, we're doing some renovations to the existing facilities, we're not building anything new up where the equestrian, where the barn is. We're upgrading that, and that's going to be our agricultural part of it. You know, that's not really changing. The first phase is the residential part. The second phase is basically upgrading what is already there, so we can use it for our agricultural purposes. The third phase is not before the body, but the preliminary, the statute requires, if you're going to be going forward in three phases, even if you're not trying to get the approval for all of them, at least give you an overview as to what may be coming down the line. So we just want to make sure we met the exact letter of the ordinance. And, you know, at some point, we talked about this, might be some place where we could do some, some lodge activity for, for KARM. That would have to come back before this board for approval at that time. That's not part of this, and that wouldn't be part of our final PUD that we come forward. We'd have to start that process over again for that phase.
Okay. In, in that, so basically... In, in that, so basically, what you would be looking at tonight is phase one and phase two. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You have in here a restaurant catering, but you don't show that on your plan, the restaurant, unless I missed it.
I'm looking at the, we have the residential community, that's A. I'm looking at this, this one right here, okay. Welcome Center, dining, learning, residential lodging administration. The dining and learning is, you know, one building where there's a cafeteria, and that's what we're actually going to come forward and actually just make that a church with the fellowship hall, but that's not timely before this board. The recreation education, that's the agricultural area, and that's a market and shop, river program, event hospitality, equestrian agriculture. I didn't see the restaurant there on that. I'm, I'm missing it. The lodging, phase three, there might be something like that that we'd move forward, but that's not something we're asking for approval yet.
The restaurant catering.
Yeah, that's, that's not something that's...
Oh, it says in phase two, doesn't it? Not in phase three?
Well, that's what he's, that's what he's got, and that's why I was questioning. I just didn't see the structure on the map, where it was going to be located at. I know there's a dining, but I'm assuming that dining was basically in phase one, if I'm, if I'm correct on that.
I understand that in the concept summary, there is phase two, and that's not on here, so that's not something that we're, it's not part of the plan that we submitted, so we're not asking for that to be approved tonight.
Question?
Yes.
Will any of these people be allowed to drive?
Not initially. Initially, they don't have cars. If they don't, if they're homeless, they don't have cars either, and so they, we will be bringing them onto the site. If they need to leave the site, we will take them somewhere else. Now, part of the program is after 12 months, we find them, help them find a job, and help them, they'll start paying a percentage of their income for the rent, and then acquire their own form of transportation so they can go back and forth on their own, just like any, any adult that works would do. But initially, they would not be driving on their own. That would be after they've got to the point where they are more independent and earning enough income where they can afford a car, they can afford to pay rent, instead of working for their rent under the, the initial concept.
Well, if you have to evict someone...
We would have to take them off somewhere.
Where do you take them off to?
We'd take them where they told us to take them. Whether that's home, if they're from Blount County, or they say, where do you want to go? We take them there.
What if they went off at the end of the road there? Just turn them loose?
They're, these aren't criminals, they're adults. If you wanted me to give you a ride to the end of the road, I would do that too, and so it's no different than that. I mean, it's, they're autonomous, they can go, but, you know, we are taking responsibility for them while they're on the property. If they want to go somewhere, they want to leave, they say we're done, they can leave. We will take them where they want to go. You know, the reason we are interested in a place like this is we want to be in a rural area where they're outside of their normal comfort zone. They're outside of, you know, the stressors and the indicators, so they can have a clean mind and a fresh start. If they don't want to be here, if this isn't for him, them, they're not going to want to stay here, they're going to want to go somewhere else. And we will take them where they want to go, because, again, they're, they're an autonomous individual, but, you know, that's...
What's the success rate at Serrati House?
Todd, you want to answer that? What was the success rate at Serrati House?
So the success rate at Serrati is about a 54% graduation rate as of today, and about 88% retention in terms of staying sober, which it's about to reverse in a short-term recovery program, which is typically less than 30 days to buy short-term. It's about a 60 to 80% de laction. So ours is long-term, and we believe that's partly the reason a lot of people stay sober because they've integrated into community and healthy. If I can add one bit of clarity to a lot of Vinnie Dunn wonderful just talking, when it comes to exits, we will, we will drive them actually back to our main campus for referrals out, so they don't have to go into a Karm-based program, so go into that, hey, they're adults, they can choose where to go, but we won't just, we won't act as an Uber, hey, drop us here, and we have to do that. Part of the intake process of getting to the program, they'll know at the very front, no matter where we end up. If they exit prematurely, they will have to go back to the main campus. We have a welcome center there, and that welcome center is designed to connect them with family, connect them with relatives, connect them to other resources, whether it be Karm or somewhere else. That would be the point of drop-off, so that way they get immediately connected with someone to move, make sure we're continually moving forward with their life.
Todd, would you state your, your name and your position with Karm for the record, so we have that?
Yes, my name's Todd Gilbert. I'm the chief operating officer at Karm.
And I apologize for misspeaking about that.
Other questions?
The first, on your first page of your letter, you indicated that preliminary PUD plan approach should serve as a plan for a final PUD program. What did you mean by that?
Well, I meant what, when you're looking at seven point four I three A, I was, it says the approval of a preliminary PUD shall serve as the plan upon which the final PUD plan is based. So this is overall what we're trying to do. Now, how do you actually engineer and do it when we come forward within 12 months for the final PUD plan? That's what I was trying to speak to on that.
Before then, is a preliminary?
That's right. We have to come back 12 months, again, with road profiles, with utility, with the level of detail that the chairman was, was talking about on some of these things that you're used to seeing during a preliminary plat.
You had mentioned the, you had mentioned the contract that they had. Is that, I'm figuring that, is it, is it the contract already entered? Purchase is an option contract? What is it?
It's a, it's a PSA, and we have, we're going through a due diligence right now. We don't, it's, you know, we will be able to purchase it, you know, subject to, you know, these approvals that we need to get.
Only other thing, I have two other questions just about the legal requirements, I want to be sure where you stand. Are you all saying that the, since the property's not purchased, are you saying that the Fair Housing Act applies, even though the use doesn't exist right now?
I'm, I'm saying there's an argument for that, yes.
And the, the other thing with respect to the...
If, if the use isn't approved, and that's why...
I'm sorry, I missed you on that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, if, if we are denied a use and not able to, to house these individuals, and I think there is a Fair Housing Act issue there.
And the only other thing, or the only other, one of the only other questions I had was, under the residences of persons with disabilities, you cited on thirteen twenty-four one oh two, indicates that, that that, these persons that are going to live here have to be persons with disabilities? And so I guess my question is, I want to be sure I understand, is, when you say disability, or if you're going to argue that that should be approved, what disabilities are the folks that are going to be down there?
Sure, I understand that. It could be mental illness, you know, some, some level where they've had that and have sought treatment in the past. It could be some substance abuse. The, the state statute does not give a definition for disability. The ADA does, and there's been case law that have applied that definition of disability to this. So, I mean, you know, if, you know, they, you know, had substance, they were an alcoholic, and we've had, we have all had alcoholics in the family, you know, that meets the definition of, of a disability under the ADA and would under this statute.
But are they under current disabilities, is what I'm saying? I understand what you're, I understand, I understand what you're trying to do, but I mean, like, the folks that are going to be living there, is it going to be a current disability, you know, or are they going to be under that physical, mental disability, or is it going to be a disability that used to exist?
Well, if, if you've had substance abuse issues, it's something that you deal with your entire life. You may be clean, you may be sober for six months, you may be sober for six years, but you're still an alcoholic. You're just somebody who's being treated. And I think anybody who's had alcoholism or substance abuse in the family understands that is ongoing. You never stop suffering from that disease. You just make sure you get treated, just like I take my blood pressure medicine every night. You make sure that you find the treatment for it. And, and so, yes, I think we would meet that definition with the state statute, Todd. Thank you.
Other questions?
So you're responsible for, while they're on your property, if they get off your property, you're not responsible?
I'm not saying we're not responsible for them if they get off the property. You know, they, you know, again, it's not been our experience, like, at Serrati House, which has been a, this, a similar program, that people just go off and leave and do, you know, nefarious things. If people don't want to be there, they say, we don't want to be there, and then we make sure they can go somewhere else. Now, can I say somebody's not going to, you know, decide they just want to take off in the middle? No, I can't guarantee that. I can't guarantee the sun's going to come up tomorrow either, but in my experience, I believe the sun's most likely going to come up tomorrow. Based upon our experience of this type of treatment at other locations, that just doesn't happen, because, again, these are people that are voluntary, they're vetted, you know, they want to improve themselves. This, this isn't the person that just, you know, came off the street and then you have to go into detoxification, and then, you know, they'll lie to you, look and say whatever you want to. You know, these are people that have been successful through other programs and now are looking for a way they can, you know, finally, fully, you know, integrate themselves back to being productive adults.
Any other members on this board? No more questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I think we have some citizens who would like to come and speak in regards to this issue that's before us. I would ask that you confine your time to three minutes, as the rules state on their citizens' input form. First one that I have is Carla Lindsay.
I can, I can back, you can back please, I'm not going down.
Oh, I can.
Thank you.
Okay. Sharon Chester. If you'll state your name and give us your address for the record, please.
I'm Sharon Chester, 27 Thirty Day Road in Strawberry Plains.
Okay, thank you.
And my questions are for them, I mean...
No, ma'am, you, you have to speak to us.
Why Jefferson County? I mean, we have nothing to gain from this. They have properties in Knox County this size that they could do that in. It's a small community. If somebody wants to walk off, I mean, I know they have no convicted criminals, no convicted sex offenders, but not everybody that's committed a crime or a sexual crime have been convicted. So how do we know what we're going to get? I mean, it's just bad for the community, and we don't want it. Why would they want to be somewhere where they're not wanted? You know? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. David Seals.
Yes, sir, David Seals. I have residence of two-three-two-seven Nantis Ferry Road in Newmarket. Also, I'm a part-owner of nineteen sixty-six London Road, which is, will be the road that they're wanting to purchase. My biggest concern is, this is a senior citizens' community. My mother would be living right across the street, she's in her eighties, and I don't have to tell you that we're worried about our senior citizens. A lot of them look at me, I'm a retired military man for 27 years. I did everything I could do. When I talked to Karms later on, I asked them if they had a program before, and they said they did, and it failed. So what's going to make this even success? They said they want to farm this land. Do they really know what it takes to farm the land? All I see is a lot of suits and ties. And a lot of times, the farmers that are here, we have to help one another, because that's what it takes, a community to help one another. And they're going to have 40 men, five staff, and one guard member. How are they going to do that? That's my, my question is, they said these people can leave anytime they want to. There are several widows in that area that would be easy picking, and that's my biggest concern. And then also, they said they want to continue the horse shows down there. Probably 90% of the horse shows are women and young girls. Very many males are down there. I don't believe these young women, and these young girls will come if they know they've got a facility that's, that's holding 40 men, that's in some type of recovery or addiction, that's going to be allowed to be around these million-dollar horses, or a thousand, hundred-thousand-dollar horses and stuff. And a lot of times, these people have drugs for their horses, for their animals, and about every senior in here has medications. Where would somebody who wanted to take something will come? And who says if they come here and they got family members? To me, they'd be doing a recon of what they can come back later on and get. And that, my biggest concern is our citizens. This is a senior citizen community, and they will give you the shirt off their back. We look out for one another. If I hear a gunshot, I'm probably saying it's probably Bobby or Wilson am shooting, shooting a coyote.
About 20 more seconds, mister.
And like I said, is, we look at each other's, my neighbor Bobby Herbert, I saw one of his horses, I was able to go into his property and look at his animal. If we've got these other people coming in, is he going to think it's one of his neighbors or somebody trying to take something from him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next I have is Taylor Forrester.
My name's Taylor Forrester. I'm an attorney in Knoxville with Long Ragstone Waters, and I'm here on behalf of my clients, Dr. Williams and Lisa Simmons, their residents and property owners within the Newmarket community. I submitted a letter today, and I've raised two, two issues at this time. Address the shortest one first, is, as noted by the zoning official, Mr. Seals, that they submitted a revised plat yesterday. The ordinances require that there be ten working, submitted ten working days prior to the meeting. This, this revised preliminary PUD plan is significantly different, materially different, than the one that was originally submitted. I think you, you noted that in, in some of your questions, and I, and I noticed that as well in the, in the letter where it refers to there being 40 units broken up into five apartments, but on this plan, what we see is that not only there are apartments, there's also dormitory-type units, and it has grown from 40, 40 beds to 44 beds. There's also a lodge listed on the, on the plans. However, there's no reference as to what the purpose of this lodge is, or what's it to serve. The other material change is that they have changed one of the buildings to now be reflected as a church. So first, first contention is that it's, it's not ripe for consideration, because it wasn't timely filed with the, Mr. Seals' office, zoning official, as required under the ordinance. The next is, is the interpretation under the A1 zoning district, and several of the questions from, from you commissioners addressed this and inquired about this, and I wanted to point out some of those. These enumerated uses in this A1, enumerated permitted uses in this A1 zoning district, they're clear, they're unambiguous. The proposed use of a residential residential... The proposed use of a residential restoration program is not listed as permitted use. Now, residential restoration program is what they're referring to as, I cited that as well. Also, recovery housing, a lot of times you'll see in these zoning ordinances, recovery housing can be a treatment facility, it can be a homeless shelter, it can be a women's shelter. There are all kinds of different treat, recovery housing facilities that fall under that definition. But you have to look to what, what is actually going on here, what is proposed to go on here. Now, they want to argue that these are residential activities as, as notified or as enumerated under the A1 zoning ordinance. But if you look at what those residential activities are that are permitted in the A1 zone, it's single-family dwellings, duplexes, mobile homes on individual lots. When you look at their plan, they have apartments, and they have dormitories. The dormitories have four beds per dormitory, but there is no kitchen, kitchenette, or, or anything. So, the primary bed count is made up from these dormitories. The apartments are next, and they, they do include, appears to be a kitchenette. And then we also have the lodging component. So, when you look at what's permitted, single-family dwellings, duplexes, mobile homes on individual lots, and you apply, try to apply that to this scenario or thi- this proposal, it, it doesn't fit. I mean, you can call it whatever you want to call it, but when you look at, at actually what's going to go on here, that, that, you all have common sense, you use your common sense to say, "This is what they're saying it is," but it's not. Question I have is, you know, further shows that this probably isn't one of these three type of residential activities that's permitted is, all these places don't have kitchens, where are they going to eat? Presumably, that's what the restaurant's for. So, will there be three meals served per day, every day, seven days a week? And with that type of setup, you're, you're looking at more like a communal living facility, which is not, listed as a permitted use either. There may be some agricultural uses going on, on the property, they haven't really identified what those are. They're, they've now included a church. But at the end of the day, in order to prove, approve a preliminary PUD plan, the ordinance requires that, for that approval, the underlying use has to be a permitted use within that zoning district. The interpretation, I wasn't privy to the conversations between Mr. Seals, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Mullins. It seems, based on Mr. Mullins' letter, that it may have been a different conversation than what's been proposed here today. That proposal has, has changed. Again, I think at best, the VZA would have to make a determination, as, as set forth under the ordinance, whether this is the type of use that is a similar use under the A1 zoning ordinance. And recognize, y'all are the same board, and that'd be a, a decision that would have to be made when, when we're in the VZA now. With that being said, we would ask that you deny the approval of the preliminary PUD plan. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Donald McGee. If you would state your name, Mr. McGee, and your, and your address, please.
Donald McGee, 963 Baker Road, New Market.
Thank you.
This is mainly for Karm. I've supported Karm for years. I've picked up stuff, I've hauled stuff, I've gone to different yard sales and stuff where people have asked me to take it to Karm. They've, I appreciate y'all have opened my eyes. I thought Karm was an organization that really cared, but when you start paying $200,000 for your CEOs and everybody else, that's not what I was doing for. Most of the people that I was getting stuff from to take there were people that were making $50,000 a year, who were nice enough to give away stuff that could be resold in these Karm stores. And so, I appreciate them opening my eyes. So, now, they won't have to worry about me doing anything else with Karm anymore. And as far as this thing here, we keep getting numbers, and I think we're getting numbers in Serenity House is not the numbers for the men's house. And everything keeps changing. If they knew what they were going to do, they would have, you know, they would know what they were doing. And I'm just waiting until we get down to the fishing and kayaking. That's it. But I, I am done with Karm.
Thank you. Let's keep some order, please. Melissa Wiseman.
Hello.
State your name and address, please.
Melissa Wiseman, 1802 Buck Hollow Road. I have lived here in that same house for 31 years. I haven't had the same family history as a lot of you, but I've been there 31 years, so I kind of consider myself a local now. I have a unique perspective on this. I'm a general contractor for 22 years. Prior to that, I was a social worker, working with the same population for 12 and a half years. I have serious concerns. The land can't support this type of development. We already know that there's water issues. What's going to happen with the power? My big question is, what type of environmental impact studies have been done, if any? What type of societal impact studies have been done, if any? We already know it's going to impact the law enforcement, based on our meeting at the church. We also know it's going to impact the hospital. What has been done? This is a small community. Our lives are drastically going to change when this organization goes in. And I too am worried about the widowers. But I'm also worried about myself. I'm a single woman, living less than a mile away from this. My other concern is on the staffing. I ran an organization, supportive living homes, where I too would go in dressed in a suit and go and rent a house, because I knew I had three disabled individuals, and they couldn't say no to me. But I also knew how dangerous they were, to the point that I had to have three awake staff. These five staff, are they awake staff? Is it 24-hour staff? These upstanding individ-, individuals that they're going to be putting on this property have to have a guard. One guard. Really? The staffing is not adequate, the protection of the community is not adequate. The last thing I would ask you to do is, I work in Knoxville. Go to the areas where Karm is, not just their treatment facilities, but go to where the stores are. Ask the neighbors in that neighborhood where those stores are, what they think of Karm. Because I tell you, you build it, and they will come. Thank you.
Lisa Salmons. If you state your name and address, please.
It's Lisa Salmons, and the address is 1993 River Miss Circle in New Market. First thing I would like to say before I kind of go into concerns is that, when I first heard, my husband and I heard about this complex, we heard it was going to be like a 40-bed restorative type facility for recovering addicts and different, you know, people with different issues. When we look at the plan, it's a compound. It looks like a mini BlackBerry farm. That's the first thing that I thought. So, I'm just going to go into what concerns we have. Due to the fact that Jefferson County is very small, roughly about 55,000 residents, services are limited here. Services of concern for this project of this magnitude is the utilization of roads and bridges in the county. Has there been a traffic impact study done? The wear and tear on country roads from dump trucks, concrete trucks, mobile cranes, and just a steady stream of supplies and workers will create a negative impact on small, narrow country roads with little money to repair damages. Not to mention, the extra traffic in areas that are primarily farmland, where livestock and farm equipment must be moved on an ongoing basis. As well, many of the roads would be deemed nonusable due to overpassed tunnels, for example, with limited clearance. That being said, that would put more stress on the roads that would be usable, and also at the end of the build, there would be significantly more traffic on all of these roads because of the people utilizing the compound. Another concern is the need for sewer and wastewater management. Has a plan for sewer and wastewater been presented? Would it be a cluster community system, for example? If so, who will maintain that and oversee it? And is there an overflow response plan? There's approximately 185 acres of land that make up this proposed build site. How much of that land is actually available for development, and are there restrictions for any type of river contour lines with regards to this? A failure of a system of that type could be catastrophic to the Holston River. In recent years, a private company called Tennessee Wastewater set up a community-sized septic system in a Smoky Mountain Cabin community. That system failed miserably. It soaked the entire surrounding area, the neighborhoods, and actually contaminated a lake. So, this question doesn't really relate to anything, but it goes back to zoning. Is a wastewater treatment plant or any other type of public entity permitted in this town? As well, an inquiry as to water services to the property for use indicates that the water lines currently in place are most likely severely insufficient for this type of project. Thus, who will be responsible for updating water lines? Would a project of this scale be a threat to water access to current residents and to the many farmers that have working farms here? Another concern, of course, has been brought up is emergency services. Small county, not a lot of police, EMS, how would that be affected? In looking at the Form 990 for 2020 for Karm, and this is in closing...
20 more seconds.
Okay. They, they had at that time over $18 million, so to say that they have a lot of money is an understatement. At the end of the day, we just need to look at what the impact would be for this county, the day-to-day life, and will it result in reduction of services for the residents here? Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Lindsey.
Carla Lindsey, 2367 Hickel Road, New Market. Okay, I know y'all weren't at the meeting we had at the church, but being at that meeting and coming to this meeting, Todd said...
Am I wrong? You said there would be no chronic illness, no mental illness?
There would be no violent, so violent crimes are permitted, sex offenders aren't permitted. Mental health and homelessness and drugs...
That go hand in hand, but if it's, but at that meeting, you said there wouldn't be.
No. My, my very first introduction note stated that this is actually our Karm.
Ms. Lindsey, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
You did your dress here.
Sorry, sorry. So, that, with that, and is this going to be a tax exemption, like there, I know Karm's like, are they tax exempt? Is this going to be a benefit to our community or our county? Or is we going to be handing out and having to fix roads and the water? It's going to be a stress on our infrastructure? Let's see. They're talking about farming the land, last time, like gardening season's like two months out of the year. So, I don't know how that, they're going to eat off the land yearly or around the year. I think that's about it, sorry. Oh, is the church and restaurant going to be open to the public if it happens? So, I was just, they might want to go have Sunday brunch at the church soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that being all. If you didn't sign up, what was your name?
Barbara Shelton.
Ma'am, I may have missed you, Michelle. Just a moment. I, I do, I'm sorry. I did miss you. Yes, Michelle. I apologize for that.
My name's Barbara Shelton, and I live at 1261 Lost Creek Road in New Market. Riverland is a beautiful place. I got the privilege to see it when I was in the Jefferson County Leadership Class, and I'm proud that what they have, the caliber of horse shows that they have there. And I'm sad that, you know, this is going to happen, that's being sold to Karm. I'm sorry, but I can understand as a Christian that these people need to be rehabilitated, I guess you might say. But number one, I didn't know about the meeting at Nantis Grove, so I didn't get the memo, I guess. But we already have a farm that helps addicted or past addicted people here in Jefferson County as Renovatus. And they take these people in like Karm is going to do, and lets them farm, and they sell their produce, I guess, at farmer's markets, probably here in Dandridge. And so, we don't need a competing process going on, two, two very fine things going on, competing against each other in, in farming. And like David said, Mr. Seals said, all I've been seeing is suits and ties. And I have a friend who raises cattle. Are they going to raise cattle? Are they going to grow vegetables? Well, it takes knowledge to do this. And I have looked at their finances, and I'm just wondering, how are they going to afford $3.9 million to buy Riverland? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Katie Huffaker. She's gone. Commissioner Shelton gets a minute.
I'll take a minute.
I'll hold you there.
My name's Katie Huffaker, 2082 Oak Grove Road, Dandridge, and as you know, I'm a commissioner in the first district. So, my concern about this is, I know they're requesting a PUD for 40, but in their initial phase, can they come and request more PUDs to be added later? And the reason why I think this is such a big concern is because when you're talking about your traffic impact, they initially say they're going to have 40, and then they add two or three more, your traffic impact study's not going to be appropriate. And I think everybody in this room would like to know if they could add more housing after that. So, that's my only question. Is the first phase one PUD, and then the third phase, another one or two?
Thank you. Mr. Mullins, I would offer you a little, I'll potential rebuttal if you feel you need it.
And I'll be brief. I do appreciate concerns and questions. To Commissioner Huffaker's question, anything that changes, we've got to come back through. If we do a PUD, it's here, and we want to do something different, we want to change it, it's through that process. This PUD process has to be completely transparent. So, if we want to add more units, we've got to come back, and we've got to look at the impact, and we've got to start this process all over again, looking at what that would do in, in conjunction with what is already there. So, it's not like, you know, once we do this, we can just do whatever we want to on the property. It's that, that planned unit development process, it's a planned process and requires this public process to be part of it. So, yeah, just briefly responding to some of the things that Mr. Forrester brought up. You know, the, the concept that we submitted in April is what we're moving forward on. It doesn't include the church. If we want to do the church, we'll have to submit a revised PUD and come back through. The, I think Mr. Forrester might have, I know he was hired recently on this, he might have conflated some of the things that we showed on the overall... have conflated some of the things that we showed on the overall, you know, plan that could be potential things in the future aren't things that we're asking for now. We're asking for that phase, that phase A, which is that residential, which is the forty beds for the individuals, and then there's, you know, those additional, you know, temporary state housing for guests. That's, that's not, you know, long-term housing. That is just somebody wants to come and visit for a weekend to see their, their father, see their, their uncle, you know, see their son. There's a place to stay where they're not, you know, they don't have to drive far out and maybe be part of it once that's approved. And that was on the original plan as well. The plan hasn't changed. What we submit, please, I was quiet while you all were speaking. I appreciate the same courtesy. So the, the concept hasn't changed on what we initially submitted, other than that we wanted to take that dining education facility and say, you know, a church would be better served there. And yes, the church would be open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, at this time, after you've heard the comments and you have had an opportunity to review the plan from that standpoint, I will ask Jordan if you would, after you have reviewed the plan, if there were any recommendations based on what you've heard and what's been presented?
Well, I got a few thoughts here, based on what I've heard. First off, I agree with Terry that the dwelling unit definition for the dormitory situation would not be appropriate. That would not meet our, that would not meet our definition of dwelling units, so that would have to be addressed. I think the, the quote-unquote apartments are just, really just duplexes for, for our definition. I agree with Mr. Williams' initial assessment that obviously PUDs are allowed in A1. We do not have, we do not define recovery housing or any, any other term like that in our zoning ordinance, so therefore I can't assess that, if that's appropriate or not. So you have to go to, in my mind, you have to go to the individual uses that are being asked for, all of which, from what I see, are approved, are allowed in the zone. So that's, that's just my review of it. Furthermore, with the revised plan, they would have to come back and, yeah, even if we were to approve this, you know, they would have to come back. If they're going to ask for something different, they'd have to come back and, and get another approval there. I have no idea about the Fair Housing Act or whether that applies or not. That's a legal matter that I would not be qualified to, it may or may not. So overliving homes are considered single-family homes by, by law. But the question of whether, it's, it's not, it's not been approved yet, so the question of, of timing or things like that, that may, that may be relevant. The R. Lupa Law may also be relevant, I'm not really sure. I, I would want legal advice on that. So as far as, as far as I can say, I think if we're going to deny it, it has to be based on something, and I'm not sure what that would be, to be honest.
Questions to Jordan? Comments?
I've got a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I got a motion.
And I want to move to deny it. If you'll get a second, I'll speak to it.
Okay.
I see a motion. I'm going to move to deny this based on a couple of things that really bother me. One is the, the plan here, it has stuff that we have never, absolutely never allowed. We have never allowed apartments. We have never allowed dormitories in this. And when that lawyer man from CARM wrote that forty-page letter, as the old boy said, it scared me, but it more concerned me than anything. And I got to digging in, and one of the things that bothers me, Ms. Sue, is this thing says in our ordinance, any item not specifically noted, and by CARM's own mission, in a letter they sent out, they're calling this a long-term men's residential restoration program. So if that's what it is, I can't find anything in our A1 thing that specifically says or is specifically noted anywhere in this A1 thing that that's allowed. And those things really, really bother me because we've never strayed off that thing, we've never allowed apartments, we've never allowed dormitories. So if that's the case, that is absolutely the reason I moved to deny.
So we've got a proper motion and a second at this time. Discussion in regards to the motions?
I agree.
Being none, then we'll vote. All of us in favor of the motion, please notify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries, so the motion for the preliminary PUD plan is, is, has been denied based upon a long-term men's restoration program in the A1 zone not be, not being listed as an allowed use. And if they would prefer, they could come before the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a, a zone that that could be allowed, or they can present again if they, if they so desire. But-
It does say that the Board of Zoning Appeals can deem it or whatever, so I mean, there's an avenue that they can explore, and it's not a, not a hindrance. But that's, I, I think we ought to do this step by step. We got to get, be fair to the citizens, to CARM, to the landowner, and especially wouldn't want to offend that lawyer feller for them writing forty pages.
Okay, okay. Okay.
One question I got, you're not sending it to the BCA?
No, I'm just saying that they have-
Not my motion, my motion is to deny, but they have an avenue.
I got you.
To, based on the reason for denial, they have an avenue to come back. And if the, so, if the Board of Zoning Appeals so desires, then that use could be deemed as an allowed use there, as far as it goes. Okay. All right. We could have some, a little bit of discussion on the land use plan. I talked to Jordan, the map is almost completed.
That overlay map?
The overlay map is nearly completed.
First, first thing, Jefferson County hasn't kept a electronic zoning map updated, they just used the physical, worked off the physical map, so first thing is to convert the physical map to a digital map, which Emily's almost done with. She's, she's working out from twenty-eleven, and she's up until, I think, twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen now, so she's working her way up. Once we get that digital zoning map, then she can do the overlay with the, with the land use. And she, I think she should be admiring that, so probably next month, she'll have that.
So she's going to show us how it progresses, like the decades?
First off, she's going to show us all the properties that have been rezoned, okay, that were done this year, those changes. And then she will show the land use as it typically, as it actually is, as you can lay right on top of that zoning map to see where, you know, there's new subdivisions or new roads or anything like that, that'll show up on, on that.
It's going to be a Austin-Davidson map, yes.
Hey, if you would, please, please, if you would, sorry. We're still having a meeting here, discussion, so if you would.
Can't believe it, it was done. That hurts my feelings.
Well, anyway, that's sort of where we're staying, and I really think it's going to help us tremendously to have that kind of, to make our job a hundred times easier.
So every rezoning y'all here, if you're not on, we changed the map right away, Emily changed the map right away, and we're pretty all good on that.
Okay. So for item C, do I have a motion just to roll that one up till we get that map? Got a proper motion?
Second.
And second, all of us, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, let's see, other business, what was I just getting ready to ask, talk about here? That, that. Well, that, but, oh, I was saying. Oh, I know it was. Can you give us an update on the status for, are you going to be our full-time planner?
I will be, if you will have me, I will be your full-time planner.
And I didn't get to say so, did I?
We vote on that?
I don't have to be. Well, no, I mean, I'm just, that's not, that's not, that's really not our call. I'm just, I was just trying to find out where we were at in the process.
Yeah, so we're hiring another planner, we've interviewed a couple folks, as far as I understand. You know, we've got Joe Barrett, we've got myself, and that's pretty much it for now. So we're going to hire another planner, and they're prob, I think they're probably going to be fresh out of school as far as, I'm not 100% sure, but-
Rookies.
Most likely, so I don't know.
They come to our meeting, they won't be rookies for long.
No, they'll get the high, took off breakers.
I am the planner for Jefferson City in Dandridge already, so I'd be honored to do it. I can keep the community, give, give Manorville or some other community to the new planner.
He'd be glad to have it.
You sure?
Yeah. I, you know, it's been twenty-four years I've been with the same guy, so I remember marriage.
He does take him out to eat, I don't know if that's a date or what.
He always bought, George.
Well, you're going to have to buy from me, brother.
Not here to defend the subject.
Okay.
I try to fill David's shoes, but that's, I don't think that's going to happen, so.
So, Jordan and I have been having a discussion in this, and I, I think I found the answer today, I'm 100% sure, okay. Each town has its own growth and planning region, okay? But there are things that go in that planning region that they have control over, but they don't have control over everything, okay? One is zoning. They can make recommendations in that, there, but it has to come to, back to the county commission to change the zone. And, but, that being said, what I was trying to make a determination was, was that when a site plan is presented to, that comes up, that, that say it's going to be presented, and it's in one of those regions, this is a site plan, a subdivision plan, it specifically states that they can rule on subdivision plan, but site plans, and so the question I had was, was to, who has the authority to look at those site plans? Okay. In, in the, in our growth plan, it had an article in there that stated in there the responsibilities. The land use plan had in there stated the responsibilities for each individual planning commission and what their, and what their responsibilities were, okay? One is, we know this, that if you're a city and you have a growth boundary, you cannot rezone that property. The county has to, has to take action to rezone the property. So the question was, is that, okay, for a subdivision, it stays in there. Those towns can, in, in, in the way I understand it, because they have subdivision guidelines, can enforce their subdivision guidelines on those people in the county.
That's state law.
That's state law, okay? The question was, was about site plans, because site plans don't fall under subdivision guidelines, they fall under zoning because there may be a specific use that, that, that was adopted in our Jefferson County guidelines, per se, all right? But, so here's my question. So let's say, for instance, it's in an A1 zone in the county, and you have a list of uses that the county says, this is the allowed uses because the county zoned that based upon county zoning, all right? The towns have different designations for different things, but the town didn't get it, doesn't have the opportunity to provide that zoning, the county does. So in doing that, then the county then says, okay, you want to do this, this development right here, whatever, whatever it may be. And it might just be as simple as building a, a grocery store, all right? But they have to submit a site plan, and they had to submit it to somebody to be approved. So the question was, on a site plan, who sees it? Who sees it? And that's the question that we've been wrestling with.
Well, for twenty-five years, Terry knows this.
Well, we've done it.
Always went to the towns.
But here's the thing.
On a site plan.
And they apply county zoning regulations to the site plan the city does.
Because we have to, the only way they can do that is because what's allowed in that zone, the county designated. That use, and that use has guidelines that were adopted by, or recommended by this planning commission for that particular zone.
Say, the county is a higher level, county supersedes municipality, so it is a higher, you know what I'm saying, in the hierarchy of government, federal, state, county, municipal. So in that regard, it wouldn't, it's not, it's kind of like a city in, a city applying state law, you know? That actually makes sense, just something.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is that, so when it comes time, then that municipality then would enforce the zoning guidelines that the county adopted?
The way Dan, yes, the way Dan wore the email.
So if there's a site plan that comes before them, then, then they have to review it, and they say, okay, these are the guidelines that the county has set in place for this particular item that may be on this site plan, and, and then that's what they would enforce. But if there is a variance that would need to be requested for that site plan, they would have to bring that back to this Board of Zoning Appeals, would they not?
Yes.
Well, it's always, they don't have, to my knowledge, none of the three cities that have the regional planning, they have a Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, no, they do have Board of Zoning Appeals. But my question-
Not the region.
Not the region.
Not the region. Not the region.
I did not know that.
I've asked that question for-
So you're saying the region doesn't have a Board of Zoning Appeals?
The regionals don't have a Board of Zoning Appeals.
So they don't have a Board of Zoning Appeals? So if there is a variance that would be needed on, for that, for that particular site plan, it would have to come back before the county Board of Zoning Appeals to be approved?
Just like we did tonight.
And then they would have to go back to-
Ronnie Trent.
See, I was right after all, but I didn't know it.
I sent Ronnie, I sent Ronnie to Jefferson City because he's in the region. Jordan and, what's the guy's name over there?
Jeff.
They sent him back to me, so I, you know, we need to get it right. To me, it's always been that way, but-
Okay.
I just don't know where that comes, my saying is wrong, but-
We always went with Dan Hall.
Why wouldn't there, in the email?
I don't know, if you find out if they got a BCA, I'm more than-
But what you're saying is, is the BCA only got, their Board of Zoning Appeals only extends to their city boundary. Once you go into the growth boundary, they have none.
They have none.
But where do you get that from?
Well, what, that would make sense if we're, if we're setting, if they have to apply our standards, that makes sense. They can't do a variance.
They can't change the standards.
They can't change it. We're the only ones that can change the standards, so yeah, I, I think that makes sense. I can follow that.
So, pretty easy. So for Ronnie Trent tonight, we should have given the variance, and then it should have gone-
He should have went back to Jefferson City, but we've already, we've done him twice, so.
Well.
I didn't want to send him back to Jefferson City next month.
Okay, now that we know-
And I don't think it, it's a big deal.
Only because it was a new use.
Right.
If it was-
I know you're saying that.
All you needed was variance.
Yeah, right.
I know, I know you're saying that, not a big deal.
Well, I mean, open it.
But what I don't want to happen is, is when issues come up, I don't want, I don't want the battle to be fought twice because we weren't, we weren't correct.
I agree.
Well, why don't, why don't, since you're a planner for everybody now.
Everybody but Wattpad.
Everybody but Wattpad.
The New Market.
What about Wattpad?
Well, New Market, for some reason, recorded their regional boundary last week.
I saw that.
And, and I do not know if they have a regional planning commission. To my knowledge, they don't.
It doesn't mention them in the land-
No, they don't.
Well, they've got an area in that map in my office, but they've never had a regional planning commission. And, and the mayor down there seems to think they do, or I don't know what he's, I don't know. Nobody's contacted me, Mayor, I just seen where they recorded that.
There's never been anything Newmarket done except what's inside the boundary.
Right.
They've never done anything outside.
That's, yeah. And I don't know if they're trying to change that and get a regional planning commission, I don't know what.
I guess what I'm saying, why don't you write it down?
Well, I think that's what needs to be done. That way, everything, but I think it makes, I think we've got it sorted out logically.
But that makes sense if, if it's our standard, they can't change our standard.
That's right.
Yeah.
But the variance.
The variance changes our standard.
Well, it does, but there's a standard for giving variance that's in law, that's in.
And, but it is our authority, I mean, not.
Well, same thing for zoning, you know, same thing for.
Yeah, but they don't have, they, they're not the ones that made the standard.
Same for site plans, I mean, if they're using the county, that's why, originally I thought that the county should be hearing site plans. If it's in the county, if it's not in the corporate. Well, actually Terry's the corporate. If it's not in the city limits, then the city shouldn't be applying another jurisdiction's zoning. But when I think about it in terms of the hierarchy of government, it's federal, state, county. County is a subdivision of the state. Municipality only exists because the state allows it to. So the county's above the city. The city can apply, there's a precedent for it, the city can apply county law and state law. So that's what they're doing in this case.
If I remember, and I was on the original thing when we did the boundaries, the growth boundaries, I was on that committee and if I remember the way they told us that the agreement was at the state, that they had those. County got such a standard, but the reason the municipalities heard that in their regional planning is that that was the expected growth area for them for the next X number of years.
Well, it used to be twenty-five.
It, it used to be.
Yeah.
So if there was a project coming in, they needed input in that, but they had to apply the standard.
That the county has.
That the county had.
Yeah, that's the logic.
In that. And that, that was how the thing, that was the agreement or negotiation that was made in Nashville to get that through and used was to, and it was designed to slow some things down that the cities were doing.
But in the subdivision rings, that's a different ballgame. They go by the city's rings. Because Jefferson City don't allow twenty-five-foot ride-ones. Am I right?
Well.
Am I right on that, George?
Yes, yeah.
But we do in the county.
Yeah, well, the city.
Andrews does and Wapine does.
Back before counties had zoning, I think the planning region idea made more sense back before counties had zoning. Before, before a lot of rural counties had zoning. Jefferson County has zoning now, Sevier County has zoning, Rome County has zoning, Knox County's had zoning for a long time. Before that, though, it was the Wild West. And so cities said, okay, we want to have some oversight into our outskirts here. You know, let us have some planning authority. We don't have zoning authority outside of our municipal boundaries, but can we have some planning authority? That's why they have subdivisions, the first step in development is subdivision. So they said, okay.
Well, the most likely thing to be annexed is going to be a subdivision.
Right, yeah.
And at that time, they could annex at will.
Growth boundary is different.
When that, when that was road, they could annex at will.
We don't want to give the whole growth boundary.
Yeah, but I, I disagree with you on that now, on, on what's gonna be annexed, okay, as far as it goes.
I'm not saying, what I'm saying is, when, when that was put in, the most likely thing that they went after was a high concentration of houses.
Yeah.
And they would go after subdivisions, especially in rural counties with cities in it. I mean, you take McMinn County, Athens, all that here, you saw that, and they could do it at will.
They needed people.
They needed people. They needed taxpayers. The more taxpayers, the more revenue.
We don't need more people here.
And so when they created that, once they stopped the annexation, where they couldn't do it at will, then that changed a huge thing.
Yeah. In many ways, yeah.
Which is why now then, the state legislature looked this year up doing away with growth boundaries.
Point, no, planning regions.
On planning regions, I'm sorry.
Not growth ones.
Yeah, I thought it was growth boundaries and planning regions both.
I hope it is, and I hope they do.
Well, the reason I say it is, is because, the only reason it was put into place was because on your growth boundary, it was to do the fact that that was as far as you could annex. Now then, with the annexation laws changing, you have to, somebody has to ask you to annex them. You just can't go out and annex them now.
But you still should have to plan, well, I, I think there's a different argument for growth boundaries than planning regions. It's similar, but, well, anyhow, maybe next year that'll pass, I don't know.
Okay. Because I do know that the cities don't have, all they can do, they, when, when there's a rezoning in the boundary, they, that planning commission in that municipal makes a recommendation to the county commission, but the county commission has the final say on whether the property is rezoned, okay? And which in case, if it is rezoned, then basically the, the uses that are allowed are based on what the county uses are. So as you're seeing it right now, you think that basically when a site plan comes into the growth boundary, that that site plan would be presented to the planning commission for that municipality that, that has control over that planning region in the growth boundary? And if there was to be a variance that would be required before that could be presented, if that variance would have to be brought before the county Board of Zoning Appeals and approved, and then, at that point in time, then it would go back.
Then go back.
It would go back to them.
The way it's always been, in my opinion.
Until such time, just a precedent of doing it that way. I understand the logic now with regard to, now that we're back, just sitting here, actually, you kind of understand. Variance thing, I, I mean, if I can't come up with anything different, then I don't see.
Well, I, if you can find a BCA, I mean, I, I, but I'm never saying.
Well, you know, the Jefferson City BCA, is that not, Jefferson City?
It's not in the regional, though, I don't think.
It's the Jefferson City regional plan.
All right, I missed about that.
We don't.
Okay.
We don't differentiate between municipal and regional, it's just all regional.
So, they will enforce, if it's a subdivision, they enforce the, the municipality's guidelines.
That's for sure, yeah.
If it's a site plan, they enforce the county's zoning guidelines for that particular item.
So we're gonna leave it like it is?
Well, I guess it is.
Let's just leave it like it is.
I guess it.
Terry opened a whole can of worms and now.
No. No. Dang it. No, I had an attorney to give me an opinion and I went with it. The only thing I said was, is when I looked at it, I said, if I'm gonna have to go through this, I don't have to go through it. I don't have, I don't fight two times. I don't be wrong, you have to fight two times. Okay. Anything else? How about a motion to adjourn now?
I make a motion, you adjourn.
I got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.